Good evening and welcome to St Luke's for our first Bible study as we study Faith in Action according to St James. We'll be following the letter from James in your New Testament Bibles and it's the book after Hebrews. Let's pray before George comes with the study. Father God, we praise and thank you that we are free to gather here this afternoon. We thank you for the warmth of the church, the warmth of the fellowship, and we pray now that you will anoint each one of us with your Holy Spirit. Help us to open our hearts to hear your word, to receive the blessings you have for us, and we pray for a special anointing on George as he leads us in this study. We give you thanks that you are with us now, and we pray, "Come, Holy Spirit, come." So, George, if you'd like to come and do your study.
Well, thank you for taking the time out this afternoon to come and look at this letter of James together. I trust that for all of us it will be a time of reflection and also a time of blessing as we look at this letter in depth and what it's saying to the church today. We start, of course, at the very beginning of that book in chapter 1 and verse 1, where it says, "James, a servant of God and of the Lord Jesus Christ." I don't know how that sits with you, but for me, it takes me back to the Gospel of John, chapter 14, and that wonderful, wonderful passage that has brought such comfort to people down through the years. "Let not your hearts be troubled; you believe in God, believe also in me." And right at the very beginning of this letter, that great truth is reflected in those words. "James, a servant of God and of the Lord Jesus Christ." To understand it, of course, we have to take ourselves back to the day and age when our Lord walked this earth. We have to understand the people that he was working with and fellishing with and encouraging, the people that he was teaching. They were Jewish people, and right through their history, they believed in one God. In the Old Testament, when other nations were worshiping many gods, they were worshiping one God. And their early creed, which is known as the Shema, says, "The Lord, our God, is the only Lord." And so, it didn't matter what happened to other nations, although from time to time, particularly during Solomon's time as king, I'm afraid some of the gods of other nations, and when Ahab married Jezza, some of the gods of other nations were introduced into the God's people. But although that happened from time to time, the main thrust of belief was that there is one God, and that is the God they worshipped. And therefore, when we look at the beginning of this letter, we see here something that is an absolute transformation of belief. James is not only the servant of God, whoever James may be, but he is also the servant of the Lord Jesus Christ. And I hope as we now begin to look at the authorship of this letter together this afternoon, that looking at it and learning from it, it will lay the foundation for the rest of the study which will be coming, God willing, over the weeks that lie ahead. So we look at James and we say, "Who is this man?" And we look at the scriptures and we see there are various James mentioned. In Matthew 4, verses 18 to 22, you will remember the call of James and John, the sons of Zebedee, to follow Jesus. And in Matthew's Gospel, chapter 10, verse 3, we have James, the son of Alpheus. He is numbered amongst the twelve. And in Luke 6, verse 16, we have James, the father of Judas. He was also numbered amongst the twelve, and that is not the one who betrayed our Lord. And then we have James, the brother of our Lord. And when we look at the passages concerned, we can see in Matthew 13 and 55 that in controversy, it said, "Is not this the carpenter's son? And are not his brothers, James and Joseph, Simon and Judas, among us?" And the same particular reference is made in Mark's Gospel, chapter 6 and verse 3. So we have these, at least these four people named James that we find in the New Testament scriptures. And so elsewhere in the New Testament, whenever James, the brother of our Lord, is used, it always refers to him in Acts, chapter 12 and verse 17. It's the passage where Peter was released from prison. And you'll remember that the church was earnestly in prayer that Peter would be delivered or released. And when it happened, they of all people were absolutely amazed. Isn't that typical? So often of our prayers we pray, and when prayer is answered, we are totally amazed. And when Peter came and was knocking at the door of the house, he said, "Tell this to James and to the believers." And in chapter 15 of Acts, verse 13, we have these words. It's a great council of Jerusalem. After they had finished speaking, James replied, "My brothers listened to me." He had obviously held a position of authority. And in Acts 21:18, Paul visits James at Jerusalem. So from that, you will see, and I think understand with me, that of all the James that are mentioned in the New Testament, James, the brother of our Lord, wherever you look, has a prominent place. Now, Vicky, our vicar, and Marie are going to bring to us a selection of scriptures so that we can just sit and listen to what they say.
So the first reading we're going to look at is Galatians, and it is chapter 1 and verse 19. "But I did not see any other apostle except James, the Lord's brother." That's the first reference, again mentioning James as the Lord's brother. Now we go to 1 Corinthians and chapter 4. And at verses 1 to 10, "the ministry of the apostles." "Think of us in this way, as servants of Christ and stewards of God's mysteries. Moreover, it is required of students, of stewards, that they may be found trustworthy. But with me it is a very small thing that I should be judged by you or by any human court. I do not even judge myself; I am not aware of anything against myself, but I am not thereby acquitted. It is the Lord who judges me. Therefore, do not pronounce judgment from the time before the Lord comes, who will bring to light the things now hidden in darkness and will disclose the purpose of the heart; then each one will receive the commendation from God. I have applied all this to Apollis and myself for your benefit, brothers and sisters, so that you may learn through us the meaning of the saying, 'Nothing beyond what is written,' so that none of you will be puffed up in favour of one against another; for who sees anything different in you? What do you have that you do not receive? And if you received it, why do you boast as if it were not a gift? Already you have all you want; already you have become rich. Quite apart from us, you have become kings. Indeed, I wish that you had become kings, so that we might be kings with you; for I think that God has exhibited us apostles at last of all, as though sentenced to death, because we have become a spectacle to the world, to angels and mortals. We are fools for the sake of Christ, but you are wise in Christ; we are weak, but you are strong; you are held in honour, but we in disrepute." And then, Galatians 2 and verse 9. "And when James and Sefas and John, who were acknowledged pillars, recognized the grace that had been given to me, they gave to Barnabas and me the right hand of fellowship, agreeing that we should go to the Gentiles, and they to be circumcised. And all this is the word of the Lord; thanks be to God." So Marie's now going to come, and she's going to read from the letter of James for us. Thank you, Marie.
So our first reading from the book of James is chapter 4, verses 1 to 10. And it concerns friendship with the world. Those conflicts and disputes among you, where do they come from? Do they not come from your cravings that are at war within you? You want something and you do not have it, so you commit murder. You covet something and cannot obtain it, so you engage in disputes and conflicts. You do not have because you do not ask. You ask and do not receive because you ask wrongly, in order to spend what you get on your pleasures. Adulterers! Do you not know that friendship with the world is enmity with God? Therefore, whoever wishes to be a friend of the world becomes an enemy of God. Or do you suppose that it is for nothing that Scripture says, "God yearns jealously for the Spirit that he has made to dwell in us; but he gives it all the more grace, therefore." It says, "God opposes the proud, but gives grace to the humble. Submit yourselves, therefore, to God; resist the devil, and he will flee from you; draw near to God, and he will draw near to you. Cleanse your hands, you sinners, and purify your hearts, you double-minded; lament and mourn and weep; let your laughter be turned into mourning and your joy into dejection. Humble yourselves before the Lord, and he will exalt you." And then the second reading from James is chapter 5, verses 14 and 16. "Are any among you sick? They should call for the elders of the church and have them pray over them, anointing them with oil in the name of the Lord. The prayer of faith will save the sick, and the Lord will raise them up; and anyone who has committed sins will be forgiven. Therefore confess your sins to one another and pray for one another, so that you may be healed. The prayer of the righteous is powerful and effective." This is the word of the Lord; thanks be to God.
From the various readings we have just heard, we can see that James indeed held high office in the early church, particularly in the church at Jerusalem. And when we look for scholarly opinion as to the author of this letter, then the heavy weight of evidence lies upon James, the brother of our Lord. But why is it that the authorship of this letter is so important to its understanding? Well, James is the brother of our Lord, and you don't need to be a scholar surely to realise what that meant, growing up in that home in Nazareth, at close proximity to the Lord Jesus. All the business that goes on in family life, the routine activities of that home in Nazareth, and being with our Lord from an early age. James had witnessed from close quarters, from childhood to adulthood, what our Lord was like, what he was doing, and this interaction was there for him to either accept or reject. Now, I have never had the privilege of being one of a big family. I'm an only child, and from an early age, my mother thought the sun rose and set on me, and she thought that butter wouldn't melt in my mouth. And I can tell you now, I'm not looking forward to meeting her in heaven. She will have known little difference. But Vicky here knows what it is to grow up within quite a large family. She has a sister and three brothers. And if she were to stand here and tell you some of the stories from her upbringing, it would be quite amusing and it would be quite enlightening as well. But for those of you who have brothers and sisters, those of you who have grown up within that kind of family circle, you can appreciate what James learnt, the relationships that he developed. You'll appreciate the cut and the thrust of sibling rivalry, the family life, and growing up together. And so, James had a wealth of experience from that time in that home in Nazareth that he could draw on and could look back on. But it appears that right up to the crucifixion, James held back from becoming a disciple. But all of this changed when the Lord appeared to him. And in that wonderful chapter in 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, we read that the Lord appeared to James. He yielded, and he's included among the waiting disciples in Acts, chapter 1, verse 14. Now in Acts, chapter 1 and verse 14, he's not mentioned by name, but listen to what it says. "All these were constantly devoting themselves to prayer, together with certain women, including Mary, the mother of Jesus, as well as his brothers." So James was there with the waiting church as they waited for the blessing of the Spirit on the day of Pentecost. And it took something miraculous, like the resurrection appearance of our Lord to him, to bring him into faith so that he could say, "James, a servant of God and of the Lord Jesus Christ." But of course, when we look at the scriptures right across, I mean, we look at Saul of Tarsus, it took something miraculous on the road to Damascus to change his heart and to change the direction of his life. And I don't know what your experience is of our Lord. Years of ministry have taught me that there are some people who have never known a time when they didn't have faith. It always seems to have been a part and parcel of their experience. But for others like myself, there was a moment in my life when I made that commitment to our Lord, and I gave him my heart and my life. And I was seventeen at the time, and I remember it well because it was a total life-changing moment. And therefore, when I think of James having a total life-changing moment, when I think of Saul of Tarsus, later known as Paul, as having a life-changing experience, I have no difficulty relating to that and knowing the change that this can bring about in one's life. So, from being a skeptic, James eventually became a believer. And when we pick this up, we see the threads of it as we go through this letter together. Now, James, chapter 1 and verse 1 also says that this letter was written to the twelve tribes in the dispersion. It was addressed to Jewish Christians, and that's why it was important for James to say, "I am a servant of God," because Jewish people, Christian or not, would have certainly held to the one God experience. But we know very, very little from the scriptures of predominantly Jewish churches, with the exception of that at Jerusalem. Acts, chapter 21, and verse 20 implies that Jewish Christians were numerous. We are told that the gospel had spread to Jews in Damascus. And when we look at Acts, chapter 11, and verse 19, we see that it refers to the spread going out to Cyprus and Assyria. So the Jews in the dispersion, I mean, they were numerous, and this letter was written to them in particular. The date of this letter is somewhere between Pentecost and AD 62, because in AD 62, James was put to death. So most of the people who look at it with a very, very close and searching study think that somewhere around AD 45 was the likely date of this letter. Now, why is it important as well to study? It's an important letter because of its content. James is concerned and burdened with everyday issues impacting upon the scattered flock of God. People struggling to match their newfound belief with everyday behaviour. The letter itself encapsulates the essence of Christian life in practice. And that's why it's relevant, because the issues that it deals with are the issues that we struggle with today. Things haven't changed all that much. Certainly, when we look around, lots and lots of things have changed. When I look over the period of my life, the change has been rapid and it has been mind-boggling. Many, many changes have happened through scientific advance and technology, et cetera. But the one thing that hasn't changed is the heart of man and the problems that come from that. Jesus taught that from within, out of the heart, comes all kinds of evil thoughts. And if you read your Old Testament, you read your New Testament, you read your newspapers of today, and you will see that they're all dealing in one way or another with the same kind of issues. And this is the reason why the scriptures maintain their importance. This is why it's important to read the scriptures and to understand this message, because it's speaking uniquely and challengingly into our situation as we find it today. I'm sure that you would agree with me, and certainly my experience of walking with our Lord is that there have been times when things have been very, very difficult, indeed. Life has not always been easy, and if anyone seeks to follow our Lord and expects to have an easy life, well, it's just not going to happen. And James, in the context of his letter, is writing it from the point of view of what was happening in the church of his day. There were certain debates going on. One of them had to do with faith. There were those who, perhaps like Saint Paul, although I don't think this applies totally to him, but like many who were saying that faith is enough and you don't need to have anything else. It's faith in the finished work of Christ that is all that's necessary for salvation. Paul calls it justification by faith. But then there were others within the Christian circle who wanted to turn the clock back. They were called judizers. And if you read Paul's letter to the Galatians, he deals in that letter about these people who were coming and saying that it wasn't enough to have faith. que no era suficiente tener fe en Jesús como Señor. Tenías que abrazar la ley del Nuevo Testamento. Y que los nuevos cristianos gentiles deberían ser cercumbrados, deberían mantenerse de diferentes comidas, etc., etc. Y eso estaba pasando también. Pero luego había otro lado de las cosas y tiene una palabra grande que no puedo pronunciar, pero creo que puedo pronunciarla. Y el antinomianismo estaba diciendo: "Miren, pueden pecar tanto como quieran. Y cuanto más pecen, mayor será la gloria a Dios, porque más gracia de Dios la cubre". La miramos hoy y decimos: "Gracioso, ¿realmente alguien creía eso?" Pero fue un verdadero problema entre la iglesia temprana. Y estaba junto a lo que solíamos llamar libertinos, gente que era muy, muy agradable en sus relaciones. Todo esto estaba pasando en la iglesia temprana. Y James, en su carta, está diciendo: "Miren, OK, tengo fe. Ustedes tienen fe, ¿vale? Muestren su fe". No es fácil hacer eso, ¿no es? Porque es muy mucho una cosa personal dentro de nosotros, nuestra fe en Dios y en el Señor Jesús Cristo. Pero James dice: "Miren, OK, les mostraré mi fe. Y les mostraré mi fe por lo que hago, por lo que soy". Y esa es la fuerza de su carta. Cristianidad práctica. No lo que decimos, sino lo que hacemos. No nuestras creencias, sino nuestras acciones. Y ese es el desafío que James presenta en esta carta a las iglesias. Y estoy seguro de que mientras progresamos en este estudio, y espero que continuemos juntos en este estudio, veremos exactamente cuán relevante esta carta es para nuestra vida diaria. Y es desafiante. Y ciertamente, cuando pasé por esta carta y empecé a hacer las notas para este estudio, me encontré siendo desafiado inmensamente, porque esta carta todavía tiene pies. Es todavía importante, es todavía relevante. Y es algo que cuando entiendamos plenamente lo que James está diciendo y mientras aceptamos ese desafío en nuestras vidas, bueno, creo que encontrarán que seremos mejores y sentiremos mejor por ello. Hay un historiador judío llamado Josephus. Y la mayoría de sus escritos fueron hechos en algún lugar entre 66 y 100 AD. Sus escritos en realidad nos dan una visión de la vida de la iglesia cristiana aparte de lo que sabemos de las escrituras. Habla de Jesús, el Nazarene. Habla de aquellos que eran seguidores de Jesús. Setja la vida de Jesús en una situación histórica. Y parte de sus escritos dice esto sobre James. Dice: "James fue interrogado por el Sanhedrin en el instante del sacerdote y fue castigado a la muerte". Pueden pensar: "Bueno, qué fin de vida triste para una vida". Pero solo piensen por un momento, la fuerza del carácter, la profundidad de su creencia que lo llevó a la muerte de un martiro. Fue una situación como esta que llevó a un bispo temprano llamado Tertullan a decir que el sangre de los martiros era la semilla de la iglesia. Y incluso hoy, donde ves gran crecimiento en la vida de la iglesia, es crecimiento en medio de la persecución y la sufrimiento. Donde encuentras situaciones donde todo es fácil y donde no hay gran desafío a lo que creemos, entonces las cosas tienden a morir. Pero en todo el mundo, como sabrán, y estoy seguro de su propia experiencia, sabrán que en muchas partes del mundo la iglesia cristiana está floreciendo. Pero están floreciendo en áreas que solo describiríamos como absolutamente peligrosas en su situación. Así que, al cerrar esta parte en particular del estudio y devolverlo de nuevo a Vicky, ¿podría recomendar que lees esta breve carta de James en una sesión? Son solo cinco capítulos cortos. Y si la lees directamente en una sesión, obtienes una perspectiva general de la carta y lo que dice a las iglesias particulares en las que James está escribiendo.